Heavenly Father, we're thankful to meet together as a town council. We're grateful for this opportunity to serve our community. We're aware of the fires around us and the people who are concerned. We pray that thou bless this area so that we might get the needed moisture to put out the fires, that thou help calm the troubled hearts at this time, and help us as a council and as administration, that we be able to give the right direction to those who need proper direction in the situation that we are experiencing at this time. We ask that thou bless us in our deliberations, that things that we discuss will be part of thy mighty will. We pray that we will strive to do well to represent our community in the name of Jesus Christ in it.
Amen. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father's words. We welcome the meeting to order. Today is the 12th of September 2017. Yesterday was the 11th, and not so good moment. We have additions and adoptions of the agenda next. Additions, we have under four delegation. Jeff will give us an update as to the fire situation. Under seven other business, we will put a G. It's a letter of approval request from Alex. And we have another, under seven H, will be change of location for the Landmark Barbecue. Okay? With those additions, if you would mind giving me a motion to approve.
Move to the agenda as amended.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so here you have a delegation. Jeff is going to debrief us. And first of all, I want to say to Jeff, thank you so much for your very dedicated service yesterday to help with the reception center. Jeff had been going on for over 36 hours without too much sleep. So thank you so much.
Yeah, you bet. And thank you. I had a number, most of you as council, I heard from, and offered some support and offered some help in one way or another, so that's appreciated. So a real quick synopsis, 11 o'clock last night, Murray phoned me, asked if we could open a reception center for them on their behalf, so 30 minutes later, we were open. Very simple. We knew we weren't expecting great numbers, and so we didn't have to get too much infrastructure in place. We set up in the lobby. I had Shem and Jill meet me, and they were there in 10 minutes from home at 11 o'clock. And Diane Ortley, she's been trained previously on reception center for the town in the social services aspect of our emergency plan. So she was excellent. To be frank, she came and got me calmed down, which was great, because I wasn't, hadn't done this before. This was a first for me, and she just, she knew exactly what to do. She remembered her training, and then we, she came down and really helped a bunch. The mayor and Council Barpus were down. Wade Isfeld stopped by. I fear I'll miss a few people, but we had just lots of people show up, offer to help. So we manned and opened a reception center from about 11:30 to 4:30 this morning. At about 4:30, we shut it down. We hadn't seen anybody for, or at least it was very sparse. We'd seen a couple of people at the very tail end who actually weren't under the evacuation, but were voluntarily evacuated near the Pole Haven area, the community pasture area. They had chosen to get out at that point in time. So we were pretty happy with the amount of people we registered. We registered about 109, I think, Mayor, does that sound right?
Yes.
About 109 people, which was exceeding the number the county was hoping that we would see through the registry. And the county, then I took all that up at 4:30 to the county, to the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. And they were set up there. They have a map of all the residences, which they basically took our registries and then checked them off against the map, so they had a good indication of who they heard from and who they could reach out to, and if there was any concerns there. So I wasn't involved in that process. I can't speak to exactly how that looked after the fact, but that was their intention. The county was very appreciative of the work we did for them. I went to their meeting at 9:00 this morning. So they have a briefing, an Incident Command Center briefing. Today it was at 9:01, and it's at 7:00 o'clock. So I went to the 9:00. I went home at 10:30, got a couple hours of sleep. Brad went to the 1:00 for me, and then Brad's going to the 7:00, and then I'll meet with him shortly after. So we were lucky this morning that the wind turned, and it came lightly from the north, and that helped a bunch. Now, the caution tonight is, and I'm looking at the clock because it looks, and I'm watching the leaves, it's anticipated in about an hour, we're going to get fairly decent winds from the southwest again, and gusting in Waterton, and so they are cautious about a repeat of last night, where it's up in the valley, and next thing you know, it's in mere minutes, it's down below. So for us, you know, I'll keep my phone on, and there's a chance, depending on the wind, that they would expand the evacuation area. In that case, we would now reconvene and reopen a new reception center for the new expanded evacuation area. I'm actually cautiously optimistic they won't have to expand the area. They're not allowing anyone that was evacuated back in just yet, and so there shouldn't be more people to evacuate. Everything should still be cleared out. There was loss of homes, loss of property, and so they're not prepared to let people all the way back in. I do believe, I talked to one gentleman this morning, a resident within the evacuation zone. He was correlating with some of the emergency personnel, just to get some gates open so his livestock could get out, just so his horses could run out if it flared up again. And I don't know what his involvement was, but they were working on getting gates along the highways and the right-of-ways open, so that if it flared up, the livestock could hit the highway and go.
So is there a big deal concern that there's still quite a bit of fuel in the area where the fire initially came through?
You know, I don't know a lot about that. The only thing I heard is that with the speed that it came through last night, it didn't actually burn a lot of the trees. You know, it singed it, burnt the undergrowth, singed the trees. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm sure there was extensive forest loss, but my understanding briefly was that there's still quite a bit of fuel because of the speed. When we were at the 9:00 meeting, the Pincher Creek Fire Chief had done a flyover of the area to give an assessment. Danny kind of gave us a quick briefing on that, because it happened while we were meeting. They did not expend a lot of resources on the fire on the east boundary, because that north wind came up, and it actually backed things up and cooled things off pretty well. Right now, the problem is it's heading north towards Pincher Creek and the Castle area relatively quickly at the Forest Reserve. So that's their, their bigger concern. And I feel for the county, they're in a position where they have, everyone has limited resources, there's no question. So how much do they say, let's send everything we got into the Pincher Creek County? Does that come at the expense of doing some work in the Cartston County, but at the same time, the higher need is there? So they're trying to walk a very fine line of how much do they, they lend? Of course, it's put pro quo, quote, right? You would expect that it would come back the other way, should the wind shift and you have troubles. But I was really impressed with their Operations Center briefing this morning. They have all the right people around the table. They seem to have good information. A huge convoy of firefighters and equipment from Calgary showed up this morning, from what I understand, to spell off all the locals. I think the local firefighters were getting tired, and so there was a large contingent, apparently, from Calgary that showed up and is going to help out for a while. They have, it was calm enough today that water bombers could go. They couldn't do that yesterday during the day, according to Danny, they couldn't use them very well, too much smoke, too much wind. So that's where it's at. I'm, again, cautiously optimistic that the wind won't gust too much. It's supposed to turn back again from the north about midnight, so we just have about a seven or eight hour window here, where the wind's going to come up.
Councillors, do you have questions for Jeff? If not, I have one.
I've got two. So you mentioned that we lost some homes. Are you talking about in the county, or are you talking about in Waterton?
Yes.
Oh.
Both.
And roughly, how many homes in the county?
No, I'm a little bit cautious, because I don't know. I know of two or three, and some larger, like ranch establishments, so barns and stables and homes and the whole operation. I'd be hesitant to put a number, I just don't know. I'm just aware of a few in each.
Jim Garner lost his place right over there.
Yeah, a lot around Garner's.
Big place.
Yeah.
Just on the okay?
There's some of that.
Well, my, my son's father-in-law's, they initially reported that their, their cabin had burned down, just toward the Buffalo paddocks, but then after further looking, a firefighter who is a relative of my daughter-in-law's aunt, they did the drone thing over, and the cabin is still standing.
Okay.
So, and maybe because it went through so fast, and I noticed some pictures where the, they were showing, Gibb Shaffer posted a thing where it showed where the visitor center had burned down. There was lots of green trees still around there. And so that may have been the situation, too.
Well, let's, let's.
One other thing?
Yeah, my second question was, at the evacuation center here, did we get anyone from Blood Reserve Zone 1?
We did not.
Check in?
They were supposed to go to stand-up, I understand.
Yeah, but so I want to reiterate, Council P. Roy was not here, but one of the busiest guys going last night, constantly trying to pull people back to vetted, verified information.
Thanks very much.
And it would constantly start to drift, and then it would come back, and then drift and come back. And one of those concerns was that we were the housing and reception center for Fish Creek, St. Paul, and Bullhorn. And I was a little bit concerned about what to expect, but I was here all the way through till 10:30 this morning, and nobody, nobody came. So we didn't see that. The Blood Tribe, to their credit, and the Red Cross had transportation arrangements, and it seems like they were quite well organized. And they were, they were very proactive in their timing, too. And they were really trying to get ahead of it time-wise, which was good. So no, I did not see that. And we didn't house anyone.
We sent some people.
We had some people at the hotel, so we sent them to the hotel, but most people, again, to their credit, were prepared. They had family and friends already arranged. They came here, registered, and went to family, and so they were taken care of. So we, we didn't have a real demand of trying to find ways to house. And on that same note, we had a plethora of community members come forward and say, I have a basement room. I've got two, a whole basement that's open, I've got a spare room. And so we've got a bit of a list and a roster of those who have those resources if it goes a little longer, and people can't go home for a few more days. Maybe best to put them in someone's home versus a hotel, so.
If you need to call on any of us, I'm sure we'd be glad to come down here. I was not well last night, but I was really glad that so many of you were here.
Well, the smoke was so terrible last night.
Yeah, it was awful.
That was as bad as I've seen it.
I was, I was not well.
I've talked with the Good Samaritans, I've talked, and they were able to manage their air quality, they seemed, they seemed good.
I went over there, and it's, as long as I kept the door closed, it was pretty good.
They locked down the hospital.
Yeah. Yeah, the hospital is, the air quality was really not very well. I went and visited someone there, too. Not very nice. My question for you, Jeff, is if we had to reopen the center, how are you going to handle it a little bit the same way as yesterday?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I have no concern about volunteers, people to help. I had a number of people come into the office today and say, if you need people, I'll do a night shift. Diane just phoned me 10 minutes before council and said, I'm rested, I'm ready to go. And I had a number of other people call me or come in today and say, please call me if you need people through the night, I'll come do whatever. I should also mention, our victim services showed up last night with, and extra foods with a donation, tons of water, cases and cases of water, snacks, fruit. We didn't end up having to use a lot of it, thankfully, but.
And maybe add in there as well that Don Williams brought.
Oh, and Don and Tim Williams from the drugstore just showed up at 1:00 in the morning and said, what do you need?
Oh, wow.
What's in my store that you need?
What's in my store?
And so they made a quick run for water, and you know, it's, it's comforting, we have a tremendous amount of people willing to help. I'm not concerned about that for the scale we're looking at. If this was a huge event, we're expecting hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, I'm a little more nervous, but you know, to find six or eight good people in the night, just a phone call, and honestly, it doesn't concern me, I think we would do well. The transition we tried to make today, we ran into, and we're learning, right? We're learning some things. When you third-party your social services, as the county's done with the town, it becomes difficult to manage the message. So this morning, as people got up, I stayed here, I sent everybody home, and I stayed from, Jill went home at 6:00, and so I was here from about 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock by myself, and people were getting up, and the phone just started going mad, because everybody wanted to know what was going on this morning, should they be this, should they be that? And the risk we have is it's not our emergency. And so what's the message the county wants to spell? I'm getting calls saying, can I go back in now? The sun's up, can I go back to my place, can I go check on my animals? I don't know. I didn't know the answer to that, because I'm separated from the command center and from the EOC. So when I went up to the county this morning, the county has pulled back any, they had our phone number on the Alberta Emergency Alert and on their website to call for information. And that was partly because one lesson we learned is, from the minute they declared a state of local emergency, they should have set up a call center that was 24 hours. And now they did get some people in in the morning to help out. Jan Bangry, actually, was one of them, that was in first thing this morning, just to man phones. So until that, we had to cover it. And the problem is you start to get a little bit of ambiguity in the message, because I'm separated from the center. So we learned a couple of things there. We actually brought Mike Henderson down from the county at about 2:00 in the morning and said, you're a county guy, when there's county questions, you're answering them. He parked it in Alex's desk, and then, because we had people calling me saying, I'm sitting here with farm equipment, where do you want me? Yeah, I've no idea. I have no idea, I don't even know if they want you. But the number they had was the town office, right? So we brought Mike in so that he could correlate some of that. So we learned some things. We learned some things, we do it a little different.
All right, so thank you very much once again.
Thank you.
All right, so we have.
One of the things I found really interesting is, and we've seen it happen in every major disaster, is that the initial information that the public has is wrong, almost completely wrong. And I, and I don't know how you, how you streamline that communications model to get information out there that is correct, because it would definitely do a block towards calming people down. I suspect last night with the heavy smoke and everything, everybody was already in that kind of panic mode.
Right, yeah.
And so that, that's the one thing I would like to see us take from this, as something to really try and focus on to learn, is how, how can we maybe manage that a little better going forward?
Yeah. Well, I would just want to mention, we learned, Council Barpus will recall, because we talked about it, we probably learned an hour into the thing that we couldn't put out a message, we couldn't solidify the county's message, because it wasn't our message, but we could clarify ours.
Yes.
So as much as we couldn't go online and say, well, okay, here's the count, what you should do for the county, we went on and said, let's be very clear, the town is not evacuating. And so we made the town's position as clear as we could, because that was ambiguous. And part of the issue, it's the nature of the beast, is when people went to Alberta Emergency Alert, which is the right place to go, it just simply shows the entire county in the red zone, and Cartson smack in the middle of it.
Yeah.
So on a quick visual, now, the description's there, to defend the system, the description is there, and you can actually turn the map feature right off. So if you want to post something, you can just turn it off. Maybe that's what should have been done, because if they would have gone through the description, it was obviously more specific, but when you looked at that quickly, you saw, I'm in Etna, I'm in Cartston, I'm in Spring Cooley, I'm in Hillspring-Glenwood, I'm in the red zone, I'm in that piece on the map that's covered in red. And that was probably, in my opinion, one of the biggest causes of the.
Anxiety.
And ambiguity of the message. That was a big issue. So that was one thing I brought up with Alberta Emergency Management. Oh, and I should mention, they did send two field officers down. We had Brian with us in the office for a good chunk of the night. So we had some support there through the night to make sure everything was going well. He would go back and forth between the Emergency Operations Center, come down, see what we needed, see what they needed. It was good to have that support there as well.
Good. Thank you very much. So let's go to five adoption of, adoption of minutes of the regular meeting of August 8.
I will move the minutes.
All right. Any questions regarding those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. All right, under six, those are recommendations that were brought forward from our last CCW that Council P. Roy chaired. So under six A, recommendation from CCW, policy P. 45-2, private land development policy. We need a motion to approve the policy amendments that were made.
Happy to do that as well.
Okay.
So I move to approve policy P. 45-2 as amended.
All right. All in favor? Thank you very much. The next one is the Bylaw 1644A that deals with election signage. If you remember, there is a little bit of a glitch that needed to be fixed. The signs are allowed to be up on nomination day, starting nomination day and onward. All right, so we need a motion.
Say that again, in a quick instance.
If you are going to run again, or if you're going to run for the first time, the first day that you can put signs out is on nomination day, which is September the 17th.
18.
18.
Is that a policy for this community, or is that for everybody?
As far as, as far as.
I noticed the metrics are all.
No, that's our bylaw. We just approved it.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, every council approved that.
I just want to put out, one of the reasons we changed this is, the original, well, the wording that currently is in place says, you can put signings out at the start of the election.
That doesn't seem right.
You know, as I got reading that, I thought, what does that mean? Is that Election Day? Or actually, under the Act, the election cycle is the four years previous to the election? So if you know your intention in four years, you can put your signs out on October 17th. And I don't think we want sign clutter for four years. So I reworded it to say nomination day. Now, if council feels that's too short of a term, when I talked to Municipal Affairs, they felt that was fairly standard and reasonable. Again, they can campaign, you can campaign at any time. This is just for putting out signs. It keeps it contained to a month, but it could be a week before nomination day, two weeks before nomination day. If there was a more appropriate time, that's completely fine. I just, I think the intent when we said the start of the election was nomination day, but the wording was ambiguous.
All right, so as council, I feel comfortable with that timeframe?
I'm prepared to move.
Okay.
The amendment to Bylaw 1644A, election signage bylaw, to amend it to be more specific on our timing of when the signs are allowed.
As for nomination day. So.
So what would be his, move first reading?
Oh, sorry, that's right.
Yeah, that's all.
So what I really require of council, if we have a unanimous vote on that one, our consent, is to have the three reading because of the time factor.
So I'll move first reading of Bylaw 1644A, election signage bylaw.
All right. All in favor? All right. Council, ready?
I'll move second reading of Bylaw 1644A, election signage bylaw.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Now we need to allow for third reading.
I move to allow third reading on this bylaw.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. And Council, free?
Okay, I move for the third reading of Bylaw 1644, the amendment.
To the bylaw.
To the bylaw.
Of signage. All in favor? Thank you very much. Approved. Six C, council remuneration policy, policy review. I will ask Council Edmond or Council Creed, whoever would like to speak to that, to give us a debrief on the ad hoc committee word.
We met twice and discussed the difference.
Can you maybe explain who was on your committee?
Mr. Priest was on there, and Bill and I were on there.
Okay, all right.
And we could not see any reason why we needed to raise it at this time, but to leave it for a two-year period, to let it turn the next council that they can decide by a committee.
All right. So how did you come to your decision? Maybe you can walk us through the process, Council Creed, if you want to jump into it?
Well, we, we looked at a lot of things, we looked at other communities where they were at. I kept trying to, searching for some kind of a benchmark, you know, whether we base it on tax assessment, whether we base it on population, you know, just to try to, we went, we went round and round with quite a few things. Mr. Priest suggested that it has to do with the health of your community, as from a business standpoint. He says that his employees basically, he gauges whether, you know, his, his business is healthy, whether, whether he can afford to give them a raise, or whether he can't. It was difficult to put your finger on that with a community. You know, a community has a very long lifespan. In the end, you're looking at, you know, what we've done with employees, what we, where our community's at overall, we just, we felt that right now, the council seems happy with, with where we're at, and in the end, we decided that we just need to take it to an unbiased committee, a committee of systems on periodically, and not specifically tie it to any of those particular items, but use those, use those items as reference points, you know, the, you know, the population, the overall tax assessment would be, could be reference points to consider, you know, if the, if the, if the town is growing, if, if, if there's inflation, you know, just take into all of the considerations, but we felt that probably, you know, the human factor still has to be there of people, you know, who are knowledgeable, who are intelligent, to look at it, look at all of the factors, and then make a decision and make a recommendation. So we felt, you know, right now, status quo looks good, and we felt like in two years, we should have a citizen committee review it, and then review it again before the next election with, with maybe some retiring councillors and some citizens again. And that was, that was our feeling.
So if I understand what you're saying, we have a remuneration that puts us about in the middle of the pack when compared to other towns.
We're, we're, we're on the middle, we're, we're, we're on the lower end, but we're, we're not unfairly done by, by, we're not the lowest.
All right, so fair enough. So therefore, maybe one of you two could put a motion forward, and then we can have, we will have discussion afterwards, yeah.
Yeah, make the motion. I'll move that we accept policy R. 8-4, remuneration for council.
Or just accept the recommendation from the committee, because R. 8-4 is the current one, right?
Yeah. So we'll accept recommendations from the committee.
Oh, to, yeah, from the committee regarding council remuneration, which is to keep the status quo. Okay. All right, so questions? Comments?
Yeah, just a comment, I'm just trying to figure why you would feel that we're already on the low end, why we should stay there when considering other McGrath and Raymond are all more than we are. We're, I mean, we're almost as large as, as Raymond, and we're probably about 15% of what they, they're getting. And I understand they do have money. You know, I know that they get paid quite a bit. You know, and McGrath is more than that, so why would you, why would you feel that we're worth any less than them? When employees got 2%, didn't they? Why, we wouldn't have been worth at least 2%?
Our employees?
Yeah.
Got zero.
What did we get when they got there? Of course, we detached ourselves from the Employee Association, but didn't they get 2% a couple of years back?
You mean when ours went really high? Our remuneration over the last four years has climbed significantly.
It has.
Is it?
Yes.
It has.
It was passed by the previous council.
And to tell you the truth, it went 25%, 25%, 25%, 25% every year. So it's.
25% since we've been in?
Yeah. Every year.
Every year.
From $197 to $207, is 25%?
I'd like to know. Remuneration by your previous.
I'd like to know the thought process behind this two-year review. Why is it in the middle of that? Why is it in the middle of that new councils? Why, why isn't it dealing right when they do their financial budgets?
We decided that if we allowed them to make the change at the beginning of their term, it would not be looked on very nicely by the citizens of the town.
Well, that, that's something that they would have to deal with then.
Yes, but why put them in that prediction, predicament, I should say?
Well, if, if you did it that way, Councilor Edmonds, they would make the choice whether they wanted to set up that review committee or not. I mean, they don't have to follow what we recommend. You can't tie the hands of the next council. So they, they would make that determination whether they wanted to review that remuneration policy or not.
So it, it just puts forward a recommendation to them. They don't have, they're not bound to follow it. They can look at it two years from now and say, yeah, we're not going to follow that recommendation, we're not going to do anything with it.
And they can look at it as soon as they're elected if they want to. I mean, it's council, you know, politically, it's not a good move to, to do that.
Elected.
And this is, and this is, this is why we did that, is that we, we want to keep it as non-political as possible, and that was the, the feeling of, the way that we can do it by, you know, visually, it looks better if, if they come in. I mean, you know, a lot of, a lot of us as councillors didn't even consider, we didn't, you know, we didn't even think about remuneration when we, when we ran for council. You know, in fact, some of us didn't even know that we got any remuneration, you know. But, so, you know, when, when people run for council, it's not for the money. And we don't want, we don't want it to be for the money either. And we want to run, you know, for, you know, service to the community. That's, that's kind of where we're at. We want to keep, keep the people honest, I guess, keep, keep people.
All right, to, to keep the intent of that notion of volunteer.
If I, if I.
Except that there is stipend attached to it.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the recommendation of, of the committee, and I appreciate their hard work putting that together. One thing I was a little bit, well, one thing I wanted to have seen here that I, that we don't see, and I'm wondering if maybe we couldn't postpone this vote until we get that information, and that is those comparables, right? It was my understanding when we struck the committee that, that those comparables would be presented, yeah, discussed, and something. So it's really hard for me as a councillor to, to make a decision. You know, I, I understand the, getting a recommendation from a committee, but at the same time, it's still the responsibility of this council to make this decision. And, and so if we had a little more of that information, it would help me to, to feel better about, you know, voting on that recommendation. The other part of that is, as Councilor Baker said, and I just want to reiterate, we can't bind the next council, right? So we can make a recommendation that they review in two years with a plan that two years later, then some of those, you know, retiring councillors again do that. But I can't help but wonder if that's not exactly where we are right now. And rather than kick that can down the road to them while we are still the council, because although I intend to run again, there's no guarantee I'll be on council next time. So I feel like it's my responsibility to get this resolved before that new council comes in, and do some of that, you know, review, which is what, you know, I expected to do in this meeting. So again, long story short, I feel I would benefit from that extra information, and I would recommend a postponement of the vote, and maybe we can get that in our next packet and discuss it on our next council.
So, Councilor Bump?
So just to clarify, Councilor Poy, because this is the first time I've heard you say this, you're running?
Yeah, yeah, well, yes, yes. I am running.
Okay, just, just a second. Jeff?
Yeah.
Just for interest, would you be able to gather the information that is requested for the next, next meeting?
Well, I, I grabbed my laptop, I have everything that I gave the committee right here. Yeah, I have it right now, there's.
So is that something that you could send to all the councillors, right, as we speak?
I mean, the one package is 45 pages long, so I don't know that you want to review and deliberate it at the same time.
Okay.
Do you want to look at the comparisons?
Yes, I do have a couple of comparative charts.
Okay, can you have the comparison?
Yeah.
We have, we have a motion for it.
So.
We have a recommendation.
But.
Well, no, we have, we have a motion to accept the recommendation.
We have a motion to accept the recommendation.
Okay, so here is a little bit, I totally understand all your arguments, but also remember that we agreed as a council to strike an ad hoc committee and to charge them with a review of salary, and trusted them to come with a decision to bring back to council. And the decision, we wanted it to be done by an external group that would not be involved with the next election by only. You correct to say that you might be, you may not be, by the nature of an election, but we wanted to make sure that those who were not involved in the next election would be able to do that on our behalf, having a less bias or perception of a bias in a decision-making process. So we had chosen two years as a review for the reasons that were cited, and we felt midterm was not about time to kind of bring back the, the review. There is another element that was spoken of, which is that element of, let's not forget that we came to council to volunteer our time and our effort and our intelligence in order to serve the community. That there are stipend attached to it on our area, whatever you want to call it, is true, is therefore in all communities. That we need to be careful financially, I always have said we must, because if you really look at the changes in assessment in our community, you can very quickly see that the tax dollar is not increasing at the rate that it is in, in other community. Doesn't mean that we do less work now.
I, by coincidence, when I started attending council meetings to kind of get a little bit of a feel for what I was potentially getting myself into during the last council's term, I happened to come in during the debate about council's wages, and was here the night where they, they passed the recommendation to the committee, which they set up very similar to what ours was. It was made up of councillors who were not going to be running again, and a couple of members from the community. And at the time, the recommendation was to literally double what council remuneration was, and at that time, it was seen to be too much, too soon, and that's why it was spread out over the 40 years, until we've seen that increase. I personally, without seeing any comparisons, and I've, I've seen the same things that Council Barnes has seen in some of the other communities that are quite high, given that, knowing that our remuneration during our term has doubled, I would have a hard time not accepting the committee's recommendation regardless of whether or not I saw the comparables here, I think.
And Councilor Barnes, if you remember, that very specific meaning, when the recommendation came back to council five years ago, I asked the committee if they had looked at the impact of the recommendation of doubling up the, the honor area, knowing what the impact was on the budget, and I did not know. And I said, added math, it would have been a tremendous burden of over $50,000 a year over the next four years. $200,000 was very difficult to find in terms of new taxes, and all the taxes that you collect cannot go to pay for your services, it made no sense. So the recommendation finished by saying, we will double it over four-year period. And so that's what we did. Councilor Edmonds?
The other thing we considered too is that the town isn't growing. Some of these other towns in the area, they are growing, and so the workload does increase, but our workload has basically been the same for the last seven years. You know, it would maybe increase the population to five people, which doesn't increase the workload. We have the same amount of committees, and sure, it'd be nice to get a lot more money, but I don't think that's why you go into politics.
Jeff, maybe you want to address as was the comparative that of them?
Sure, we've put together a couple. Now, again, their, their package is actually almost 50 pages, but we had a couple synopsis pages, but I want to preface by saying, the first one, which is in the grid system, we looked, tried to look at a number of aspects of remuneration, so not just the pay, but was there a benefit option? Did they reimburse meals or travel, those kind of things? So it's a little more comprehensive. But that actually had some interesting anomalies. For example, if you look at Cardston, I'll use the mayor, the mayor will base his $4,800 a year. If you look at McGrath, the base is double. So you would think naturally that the mayor of McGrath is taking home a lot more than the mayor of Cardston. But then what I did is I went and got all of their audited financial statements to look at total compensation, which is the last column, and because they have a completely different per diem program, or how they compensate meetings, what you'll see is that base rate for the McGrath mayor is almost exactly what he makes in the whole year. He doesn't get per diems. So he doesn't get it for meetings, that's just the pay. So we found that the mayor of Cardston, while the base is less than half, actually makes considerably more a year. So we, we realized there was a lot of intricacies about, okay, yes, here's the rule, but does that mayor go to 20 meetings a month, or five, or two? And do they get to charge for them, or not? And so it had a lot of levels. So really, the committee looked at the financial report at the very end, that, for example, Cardston would find itself less than Fort McLeod and Raymond, but more than Clare's Home and McGrath, less than Pincher Creek, more than Pitchard Butte, less than Crow's Nest Pass. When we just looked at total, at the end of the year, what did they make? Because we had a hard time deciphering the intricacies of the per diem arrangements or other compensation arrangements, it's just so different. So that's what we did, that's what we use this one for, tried to grab a bunch of the different intricacies of how much were they paying for a full day, how much for a half day? Those are all pretty consistent, by the way. We found those to be pretty, within that $200 range for a full day. Council meetings were, I mean, McLeod is half of what Cardston is, for example. We, we pay the most per meeting of all the communities we looked at. So for your meetings, when you come to, we're the highest. And so then just, you can see how it plays out in the end. The other sheet, whether you want to put, put a lot of stock in this, we just wanted to see what, having an elected council, what the burden on the rate pair was for that. That was just what we were interested in looking at. So for Cardston, for example, looking at our total assessment, total population, you guys cost $24.35 per capita annually. That's the cost for you to the rate pair, which is about, you know, three tenths of a percent of our total assessment. So we are one of the lower impact on assessment, and then we're, well, in both cases, we're at this, well, that'd be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So about the 35th, 40th percentile on impact per assessment, impact per capita. So whether you put a lot of stock in those numbers, it gave us a little context as to the impact on the rate payer for an elected council. You could make a firm argument to some of those other municipalities that maybe they're too high. You could start having some debate that it doubled the amount per capita, that might be getting a little bit up there, but that's for that community to determine. That's their, that's their debate.
And a note with that, that there is debate in some of those communities that the election issue this time.
Absolutely. I've heard about it quite clearly.
So those are the two summary sheets, and they had about 40 some odd pages of just policies and bylaws and other supporting documentation.
Okay, so council, with those type of additions, how do you feel?
I, I just, well, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the explanation. The one other concern that I had was, was on the mileage. We're not going up, we're going down, and yet the price of gas is going up still.
That's history. That's history.
I'd like to see that. We're at, we, you, we were told that we were mandated to 45 cents from 53 cents, but in the 2016, in the 2017, it just cost for the rates. I haven't seen those rates. I'd love to see those figures.
Go, go Google it right now. CRA is published, it's the number that everybody in the country uses.
Why is there still other organizations within the town that are, are paying like 54 cents?
Because of the attention.
That's up to them.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that could be changed if you want, you know, to change that.
But that's a base.
We just felt that's.
But we're, we're, we're paying just about as much for gas now as we were back when we first started, and yet the rate's going down. I just don't understand that.
Yeah.
I, I, if I, if you can explain it, I'm, I'm happy.
If I'm not mistaken, and anyone correct me if I'm wrong, if you pay above the CRA rate, it is a taxable benefit to you as a councillor, and we should be taxing you on the difference. So we've always just, and again, saying it has to be.
Gone to 43 cents now?
That's what CRA is out there. Anything above and beyond is a taxable personal benefit. I've never done any math to say this makes sense financially or not to raise it, I don't know, because I can't speak for all of your tax brackets. But anything above and beyond, we're supposed to be taxing you. Or at least you should be.
Which, which does, which would increase the complexity of doing that up too.
Yeah. I think that's the rationale for the CRA number.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, the remuneration conversation is always an awkward one for all councils, and there's no way around that, it's part of our duty to, to explore this. So for me, the question is, you know, we're the policymaking body of, of our town, and when I came on council four years ago, you know, the, kind of the, the guiding principle of remuneration was tied to, at that time, the employee contract. And so we kind of tossed that around, that maybe that was inappropriate for various reasons, and possibly even a conflict of interest when negotiating with them. So we separated those, leaving us without, you know, a solid kind of guiding principle or policy on what guides the, the council's remuneration, leaving it then to just council's whim. And, and so for, for me, I think what I'm hearing from the committee, and great work again, I understand why you came up with what you came up with, but I think what we're hearing is, hey, admittedly, we might be a little low, it probably needs to be reviewed, definitely two years from now, it should be reviewed, and at that time, that council should maybe try to find what that guiding principle should be, that can pull us along for the next, you know, however long. But I, I just keep coming back to, if I get reelected, and there's no guarantee that I will, if I get reelected, I'm comparing, I'm, I'm looking at this issue saying, so it's the councillor Poy of today who doesn't have the assurance of reelection versus the councillor Poy of two years from now, having to make this decision, who will financially benefit for sure, right? So right now, there's no guarantee that I will when I make this decision. Two years from now, there's a definite absolute assurance that any increase to myself would be to me, right? So, so to me, I'm saying, if it is the expectation of the, of the council, that two years from now, that council will be able to make a better decision, use comparables and come up with some guiding principle, I like this idea, you know, maybe looking at total cost of assessment and different things. I think we're, we're definitely getting close to something that could become a policy, a guiding policy. And I just, I, I keep coming back to, is there any way we can solve this problem before we pass that on to the next council?
Councilor Barnes?
So my, my impression of the committee's recommendation is slightly different. My impression is, the recommendation is, where we're at now is where we should be at, and they're not recommending any changes. But if council wants to look at it in two years, they recommend taking a look at it again in two years and see if anything has changed at that point. And that is the part that I fully support, is that I, I do feel we are fairly compensated where we're at now, and especially where we did, regardless of whether we were running for reelection or not, we, we did a 0% with our.
we did a zero percent with our town employees based upon the finances of our town. That was the reason why that was there, based on those finances haven't changed. And that should be the guiding principle here for us too.
Okay. All right. We have a motion on the table. I'll take one more question if necessary from all of you. And then we'll move on to vote. And you can reject the motion, you can approve it.
I can appreciate the discussion and seeing this sheet. What I do notice, there's only three communities that have the other expenses in it. And I think we have to calculate that in as we look at our per diems and so forth. Because we have a pretty healthy two-thousand-dollar professional development. Other communities don't have that. There's five communities that don't have anything in the other. I think we have to take that into account. After seeing this and listening to the discussion, I agree with councillor Balfour.
All right. So we have a motion on the table.
Did you say you were going to go around to each?
Yeah. And so I want to know, who wants to talk one more time? Councillor P. Voy, you had quite a bit of time.
Looking for clarity when, if it comes around to me again, that's not urgent.
Okay. So let's try to see. Anybody else? Councillor Edmonds, do you want to add something? Councillor Balfour, you gave us. Councillor Creed?
I'll just say that I did try very hard in the committee to find a benchmark. You know, like you said, you know, like whether it's population or whether it's overall assessment. And I did get them to agree, you know, when Jeff put this together, that those would be items would be considered in future reviews. And kind of that was the best, because I didn't, you know, I wanted to have something that... So that it's not a political move, so that we have a gauge. When it comes down, right down to it, council still has to make the decision. So that was my compromise, is that we have a citizen committee that you select and kind of put your trust, that they would be fair.
All right. Councillor Barnes, do you want to add something? Councillor... Councillor P. Voy, do you want to have one more kick at the can?
So, and again, it just comes down to, maybe I don't understand the full implications of the recommendation. So to give you an example, in our packet, we have a Schedule A, which we've always kind of had, since I've been on council at least, the convenience of knowing, how is this going to be affected next year? So my question then is, you know, we're not really leaving one of these for next council to use as a guiding principle for them. Are we saying that the status quo that we're recommending means that the 2017 rates stay and do not move at all for two years? Is that what we're saying? So we're saying there's no...
Unless they decide to look at it, they could choose to look at it their first week at the table.
Right. Because, I mean, you know, when I came on council, I was handed the convenience of a Schedule A from a previous council who made that decision, meaning I didn't have to go through the political, you know...
Because they had already passed the bylaw for that to happen.
Right. And so that's why I'm feeling just a little bit of pressure to do the same for the next council. To be responsible in that way. And what we're saying is, what we're recommending for them then, we could create a new Schedule A for them. It would be 2018 status quo, 2019 status quo, 2020, good luck. Right? Like whatever you guys decide. You know what I'm saying? Like there's really not a recommendation, there's not a policy, there's not a schedule. So that's why I feel like, are we missing something, right? Are we not doing something? Are we kicking this can down the road? I feel, you know, for all I know, I could be on this committee in two years, or not, I don't know. But I sure will have wished, or even if I'm a brand-new councillor two years from now, you know, couldn't they have solved this before the new council come on? And it's not our problem, really. Each council has to deal with their own issues. But again, if we had been able to find that guiding principle... I'm just saying, I agree with councillor Creed, and I wish we would have been able to find something during this term.
You know, it's very difficult. Salary wages is so difficult to establish properly, especially because we just came out of an economic slump. Coming out of it, what do you then take as a reference? I hear you. I understand what you're saying.
Well, if I may, just to clarify my position, I'm not trying to fight for an increase. I would accept a decrease if it made sense, right? If we had a policy that said, we're recommending a ten percent decrease to council based on this, I'd feel a lot better about that, right? As opposed to this kind of, well, we decide.
Yeah. I feel like it's the recommendation of saying, what you're getting is good.
Right.
And so it's not a case of leaving them in the void. It's saying, this is fair.
All right. We have a motion. I think we need to vote. We will not solve the issue tonight, obviously. So all in favor of the status quo? Thank you. All against it? Thank you. Four to three is accepted. Thank you. It's not the best, but we need to look at it and make a better decision later on, obviously. Under six D, administrative policy designation. If you remember, there was a certain amount of policies that needed to be changed from that designation. And so this is the addendum that needs to be put to minutes once the schedule is approved with the schedule set has been given to you as attachment A. So if you feel comfortable with that...
It's just an attachment A. That will be attached later to the policy. And when do we expect to see that policy? Next term?
Jeff, go ahead.
The intent here is that that schedule's attached to the minutes?
Of this meeting.
Of this meeting.
And then that doesn't.
That's it.
Yeah.
We talked to municipal affairs about the best way to handle it, and that's what they recommended. That you basically do a motion to rescind everything as per this schedule for the intent of becoming administrative policy. And then that stays with the minutes in perpetuity. Now, you may also remember, council, there was about six or eight ambiguous policies. We did not include any of them in this schedule. We'll deal with them one-off, committee meeting or something as time goes forward and get it totally tidied up. But we didn't want to make some assumptions in the main schedule. These were the ones that didn't have any debate last meeting. And so it is a bit... We worded, as much as I don't like to do this a lot, we worded the motion in the backgrounder to try and make sure this made sense and how this could work.
Yeah. So if you could look at the backgrounder under six D, the motion is at the bottom. That's... So somebody would have to read it.
I'm prepared to make that motion.
Go ahead, Councillor Balfour.
I'll move that council rescind the policies listed in the addendum to these minutes titled Amendment A dated September 12th, 2017.
Attachment A.
Sorry. No, sorry. No glasses. Attachment A dated September 12th, 2017. So they may be adopted as administrative policies.
Okay. And I really want to thank the committee that worked on that review of policy. It's a lot of work. Thank you so much for all you've done and collectively for all your input. Great. That came out of George Puff's recommendation, if you remember, to really put a little better order in those policies. Six E... We need to vote, sorry. All in favor? I was trying to rush that, huh? Six E, council contingency funding. I will ask Jeff to address this item. It has to do with a snow blower. And the cost is significant.
The snow blower.
The famous snow blower.
Mayor, the only thing I'm going to say on this, and being come from the mechanical background, that machine does a tremendous amount of work. And the quote for the repairs at twenty-three thousand dollars, I don't think is absolutely not out of line. When you consider the time that we've used it, the amount of years that we've used it, and the work that it does. And I consider that Jeff doesn't even have to justify this.
Well, I think it would be good for our council...
Yeah, it would be, but I mean...
It'd be important for our council to hear from the administrative perspective, the rationale.
This came as a recommendation from Barden Operations. We surpassed a thousand hours on the machine last winter. And so they sent it up to the manufacturer to go through. They're recommending that if we do a couple of major things now, and I don't have the breakdown for you, I apologize, I was going to get that, although it's Greek to me when I read it. They recommend that would extend the life considerably. And a new one of these is starting to push a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And so they felt we've taken good care of it, we've maintained well. But we've set a standard of removal for the community that we'd hear about it if we weren't using it. Because we remove all the snow off of all the streets when it snows.
I wish people could appreciate that rather than calling us and telling us all of the job we're doing.
Mayor, I think the citizens, you know, numbers, there's only a few of them that don't recognize what we're doing. Remember that we bought this machine used, but it was rebuilt at the time we bought it. So like...
You've had it now, what, four years?
No, we're going on...
We've had it about six.
Yeah, we're probably six or seven years.
And the life of the machine is a thousand hours. And so it's beyond a thousand hours.
It's just at that time where we either have to start saving for another one, hopefully you get through the next couple of years, or you put some money into it. And it's not, we put a little money into it every year, but nothing of this nature. I mean, we've never gone to this kind of overhaul.
So what are the repairs that need to be done to it, Jeff?
You know, and I don't have the breakdown. Bart had, again, the mechanics list, and a lot of it, I just frankly don't understand.
I watched that snow blower a lot last winter. And there were several times it was broke down in the middle of the street, and the mechanics, the guys underneath, they're fixing them right on the road.
It was hydraulic.
Was it hydraulic? But I thought it was really dangerous to watch those guys out there, and there was nobody flagging people around in this. And, you know, it was... We need to get it fixed. If that's reasonable, I agree with councillor Banker. He's the mechanic in our group. And I think we should do it.
Jeff, put your motion forward and that yourself.
Yeah, I was just going to point out, I think there's a councillor at this table who's spent about that much on his front bumper recently, so...
Let's get a plastic steering.
Peanuts. Oh, yeah. There you go. It was a little for the bumper.
Councillor?
Couldn't resist that.
I'll make a motion to approve that the quote for the refurbishment of our snow blowing equipment have twenty-three thousand dollars come out of contingency funding.
Thank you.
Just one question. Oh, sorry. Never mind.
So, yeah. All right.
You can't touch your bumper with this.
All in favor? Thank you very much. The blower will be repaired.
When will it be ready? They can get it in right away then?
Yeah. It's at...
Oh, it's there. They can wait until the go-ahead.
It's an ASAP type of story. All right. Let's start to go through other business under seven. Seven A is a recommendation from CCW. We recommended to write a letter of support for the Cardston Victim Service Association so that they could get a grant.
I'll move that we approve the letter of support for the Cardston Victim Services Association.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you.
I did find it a bit interesting. They sure punctuated their value last night.
Yes.
I did as well. I thought that was nice.
Seven A two, AUMA letter writing campaign. If you remember, AUMA is asking other communities to support their initiative and look for a motion.
Yeah. I'll move that we approve this letter and get it sent out for the waste management or recycling purpose.
Right. Thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you. The seven B is an item that was in camera, but requires a motion at this point. It's NMAX wire services contract. Councillor Banker?
I'll make a motion to accept the contract for NMAX.
With the increase?
Yes, with the increase as requested.
Okay. So that was something that we have not had a review of the contract for.
It was penny-so.
Right. If you use ND, impact is very, very small. All in favor? Thank you very much. Seven C, AUMA ministry meetings. We need to figure out if we want to meet different ministers at the AUMA convention coming up after the elections. In the past, we have always made an effort to see the minister, all their staff regarding issues that were on the hot burner.
They discouraged us from meeting with them last year.
Last year, the... Last year, they didn't want to see us. Just a second. Then councillor Balfour.
Just to be clear, I have not received any requests for meetings, but I thought I'd start soliciting early, because we were really shut out last year. We didn't get that opportunity. And so I thought if I can start now and see if I can get, even with, you know, if we look at things like environment, and if we look at a few things...
The highways.
I can start to see what I can get rolling.
Right. Health.
So that's actually what I was going to recommend, is that that should always be on the burner here for whatever council is coming up. The hospital is a very important issue for our community, and we need to keep beating on their door for it. So I'd like to see health and an efficient environment and...
And we might want to speak with the RCMP, the surgeon.
They were very good to visit with.
Yeah. They were excellent. All right. The next one, seven D, floodplain study letter. Jeff took the time to retrieve the letters that we had written years ago. And I knew there was a letter. I knew that was an item that I had brought forward at the time. The reply is there also for your reading. It is not in that reply showing a favorable move. But I honestly believe that another kick at the can would be a bad thing to do.
And different government.
I was looking at that when we were talking about, you know, meeting with which ministers we would meet with, and this would be a good subject to bring up in meeting with the environment.
Absolutely. So I need the motion.
Well, the only suggestion I make or situation I do, this floodplain letter, study letter, I think it needs to go up because we are a community that has a creek that runs right directly through the middle.
Exactly.
And that is a priority to us, you know. But I'll make a motion that we do a letter...
We send the letters?
We send a letter of support for new floodplain mapping.
Any other questions?
Yeah. No, just a thought on that letter. I think we need to be a little forceful in the wording of this letter because they keep on saying, oh, there are others that are more important. And I understand, everybody has, everybody has their concerns in their community. But it's really difficult when you have the other communities that they deem less important. They really have problems. We're running into this, in this problem right now, here. And we need to be firm.
Councillor Balfour, appreciate your comment. In discussing with Jeff, I had said to Jeff that we need to find the proper rationale to be able to kind of strengthen our desire to see that floodplain study redone. Because we tend to lose a lot in our town. We have bridges, and we have a community with a business, a main street of businesses that can be highly impacted by a flood.
We have a provincial and basically a federal museum.
Yes, there are many, there are many, many different things in the community that would be highly impacted.
Our utilities.
Our utilities is a kind of significant one for all systems, even who don't live in that place, so.
Anyway, so I'm appreciative of your comment. All in favor? Thank you. So the next one is a little bit more complicated. As you remember, Mr. Atkins came to counsel to obtain political support to try to retrieve more funding for the remedial of the creek. And if you remember reading correctly, and has been discussed also by Jeff with Mr. Atkins, the difficulty that we are facing is that we need to use our funds first to finish our project. And then we would be in a good position to lend support to Mr. Atkins and his desire to recruit some money, his personal money for the project of remedial of a creek. So I really think that there is wisdom in administration pointing to the fact that, first of all, let's use our grant and taxpayer dollar to look after the portion of the cost that needs to be completed. And then deal with Mr. Atkins, which would be a proper thing to do, I believe. We all suffered from that flood. And he recognized that because he did not trust the town, we could not do one application, which brought to us a lot more money. He wanted to do two applications, but the more application you do, the less money you get.
I can, I can understand Mr. Atkins' position. But I also like to reiterate that whatever we do upstream really can affect what's happening downstream. And so I think we need to look at that whole remediation program and process and make sure that our creek and our businesses are secure, even downstream from remediation that's already been done.
Now, I appreciate what you're saying, but right now what we need to do is really deal with the grant funding that has been given to us to complete the project. That's really what we're discussing.
What we have left in our portion.
Jeff, maybe you want to address that?
Sure. So, I'm trying to think where I want to back up and start here. So our Phase One, I don't know, I want to back up even further from there. The intent of the DRP program was to, to put back the creek in the form that it was prior to the event. And so it's been a very interesting process. And, and you could have a debate about whether that's the right rationale. I understand why it's their rationale because they weren't looking to pay for a bunch of enhancements and run the costs up of the whole program. But if you had an inferior piece of infrastructure to begin with, to pay to build back an inferior piece of infrastructure is a bit maddening. What has happened with this program is there is a private developer stream and there's a municipal stream. And Mr. Atkins, to be fair, I think is correct when he feels he was scrutinized on a different level in the municipality. I think he's right. In fact, I don't debate that. The reason would be though is when the municipality is applying, there's an assumption there and a safe one that this work is being done for the good of the community at large. There's a general benefit to the community. Whereas with the developer, there's a specific benefit to the developer. And the province is cautious about investing that money. So to your question, we did Phase One, which was essentially everything the province said would bring things back to how it was. Now, you and I both know there wasn't large Class 1, 2, and 3 riprap along the corners. There wasn't willows and sod and everything else. But there was at one point in time concrete riprap all through that. Now, whether that was the right thing to do back in the day, you could have another great debate. Because you certainly couldn't do that today. You couldn't go break up a whole bunch of sidewalks and dump them on the creek bank, which is what they did. So they allowed us to replace the concrete with natural riprap and called that kind of an even swap. So we did everything under Phase One that we felt and the province felt got us back to where we were before the event. Now, where Mr. Atkins has some contention is we've been allowed now to apply for a Phase Two to do additional work because we came in under budget. And he's suggesting there's no way he could pull that off with the level of scrutiny he's getting. And he's right. So the question is, what's left? The answer is, well, not much. But we've been allowed to apply, to go back in and to do, continue the work we did. So what's going to happen is if you are, if you're on the 18th hole, the big horseshoe there, we have riprap until the end of that horseshoe. And then there's a gap till the 18th hole, and there's a section. And then there's some gaps around the corner. We're going to fill in those gaps. So it'll be continuous from the 18th hole down through the tee off box and around the corner and armor that corner. And then the second phase is that the campground, it will go further upstream. So we'll go a little bit further where it's starting to, the creek comes down and heads straight east and does a few funny things in there. So that will continue upstream. Closer to the reunion center, there's some sloughing. There's some issues up towards there. And so this is going to work on that. And we feel relatively confident that that's all going to go through. There is precedent in the province for a municipality lobbying on behalf of a private developer can or did it. And it was relatively successful. Basically, what our position would have to be is that we feel there's community benefit to this installation that Mr. Atkins did. And we would, we would see if that could be transferred as a municipal installation and not a private development installation. But like the mayor said, well, to do that now jeopardizes our second phase application. It will no doubt complicate it dramatically. We have a couple of problems. One is DRP is open for five years from the point of application. And for both us and Mr. Atkins, that's spring of 2018. It's six months away. And we will not have Phase Two installed by then. We won't. So the province has told me that they would entertain an application for extension on both of the applications. Because I told them we probably need until November or December of 2018 before we were compensated and evaluated and assessed on all of Phase Two. So like I said, my recommendation is I, I think we can help Mr. Atkins. And I think it's reasonable that we do. All of his insulation was intended at the time to be on MR or ER lands. They're not specifically on his lands. There is some community benefit there. It's protecting infrastructure that we're going to take over. That riprap is now being a barrier for infrastructure. But I think the timing has to be right. There's too much to jeopardize. And I've spoken to Mr. Atkins and I think he understands that. But I think it would be well for a collective position of councils to say we, if that's what you choose, do we want to help? When the timing's right, here's what we think that looks like. So that's what you should intend. If we get everything approved, that's what you'll see happen. We've actually made application with DFO to see if we can do this work over the winter because the creek is so low right now. We could actually do a lot of it now without being in the water. Things are just so low. So we can do the whole reunion center without touching the water. Normally, we would have had to have done it. The window would have ended this week, probably like that last two weeks of August, first two weeks of September, that's normally it. But we're going to see what we can do because just the water levels are so low.
So Jeff, you said we got an extension, how long?
Well, our applications are open five years. So ours is sometime in early to mid 2018. But again, we'll look at an extension if that's what we need to.
All right, so essentially, we need to...
Yeah, and so we're looking for a motion of council to draft a letter, to recommend to council or to administration to draft a letter. And Mr. Atkins answering that right now.
Yeah, I think if you're comfortable with us assisting him in due course and time, that's what we need to tell him. And then we have a position. If he doesn't like the position, he can go about trying to get his compensation another way. But I think it extends some help. But I think it's reasonable that we don't jeopardize potentially seven figures of money to continue with this work.
All right, so I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, just one last question maybe for Jeff. Sorry, you can stay seated. The concern that Mr. Atkins brought up, which was debris at the bridges? Is there anything we can do with the water level that's so low that we could kind of legally go in and clean some of that out?
Well, what's interesting, and you know, I made a note, a mental note at the time to look at that, but, and I could be wrong. Third Avenue is clean and the golf course is clean. And I believe Main Street's clean and has been for a long time. I do know there's been some debris at the bypass road. There has been for a while. And we have asked Volker to deal with it and asked him to deal with it. But I, I'm not sure I completely agree, with all due respect to Mr. Atkins, that we have significant debris on particularly the bridges that we're in charge of. So I'm not aware of any at the golf course, Ninth Avenue, Main Street, or Third Avenue.
What about the Beaver Lodges that are longer? There's at least three. They've got some nice dams going there. And they used to get cleaned out on a regular basis, but they're not now. We've got quite a bit of water in there.
They're the only thing holding water in the creek right now.
So are we, are we just saying, thank you, Beavers?
No, they will...
For the time being, we're happy to have a little bit of water.
They'll be going away shortly. We just had to get some approvals from Fish and Wildlife.
Jeff, like they tried to refer to, was the debris that was building up during the high water?
Well, I know he had concern with some trees in the golf course bridge during the high water event. I absolutely, I know that concern. He's expressed that to me a number of times. They were gone mid-vent. They were there just for hours. And then they were gone. And I, I am not skilled enough in hydrology to tell you the impact those had on those. I, I don't know.
It's, it's the nature of the beast. When there is a higher flood, there's going to be debris. And you need a certain amount of permit to be able to go and touch those debris. Unfortunately, we cannot just go and send equipment to just do it.
It was danger to human life.
When I talked with Bart, that was his comment. He says, I was well aware of it, but I was not sending a guy in there with a long arm chainsaw with that kind of flow.
And so...
Well, didn't Sage remove some of those boards with that long arm?
Well...
Maybe?
No.
Fix nail on the ankle bay.
But you don't know, doesn't hurt.
Yes, we did use them with their long arm off the bridge. And we just couldn't touch the water. So we were kind of pinballing.
Anyway, at the end, we did a little bit of interesting work. All right, so we need that letter of support. So who is going to put a motion?
Well, Richard already did, I thought.
Was.
All right, well, I'll do that. I moved the administration to do that letter of support for...
For a better explanation after?
Yeah.
After Phase Two is complete, then, then we'll give this all the support that we can to help Mr. Atkins.
Obtain further funding.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor? Thank you very much. Now, on the 7F, here is a little bit of a more complex issue. We now have a policy that needs to be debated as to its merit. So 11th Street West, as you could see, Jeff has tried to clarify the different elements of that policy. You are, as council, able to discuss that at this time and figure out if it makes sense to you or if it doesn't make sense. Essentially, what we need to do is really understand the whole scope. And maybe Jeff, if you want to go through the elements...
Well, even if I could just preface something quickly, Mayor. This was, I don't know what your thoughts were when you read this backgrounder because I don't normally, I don't want to call it an assertive backgrounder, but I really went through this one fairly thoroughly. And part of it's born out of frustration. We continually, myself included, we continually go through this. And I've, I've felt that we've never really maybe tried to go through it pragmatically or in a linear fashion and see if this fits. Really, all I wanted to preface is, you know, you as council need to go through the questions under the policy pieces. I don't feel I need to give a lot of input there aside from the facts and the numbers I put in. You saw a couple of spreadsheets at the end. I still have a big concern with this proposal that, I think it's already cost prohibitive just at the gravel stage. I don't think the neighborhood will be too keen on caveats even just at the gravel road stage. But I get very concerned if we're just, that's the only obligation we have of the road and the developer. Because the town will be on the hook for 100% of dust abatement or paving after that. We won't get any share. And we're already not going to get most of the caveats, in my opinion. So I don't think we're going to recover a huge percentage of the costs on this road if we caveat it out by front foot. The last spreadsheet, I know it's a small printing. You'll have to do a lot of pinching and making that bigger. All I was trying to do on that spreadsheet was say hypothetically, with gravel, dust abatement or pavement, there is 100 assumptions on the spreadsheet. I assumed what caveats we'd get. I assumed how fast it would build out. I assumed all the manner of things, the value of the homes. So I had a taxation return. So I have a number of assumptions and we can manipulate this all day long. I was just trying to give some idea that if everything was the same, all things being equal, is this a reasonable rate of return for the investment of the town? So that's what I attempted to show with the, with the big spreadsheets there. It was just to give some idea. But there are a number of policy pieces here. If it fits, it fits. And we should entertain it if you feel it fits. But if it doesn't, do we put it to bed?
All right. So Jeff, I very much appreciate the way you broke it down because it allows us to create a better focus for us to understand the whole picture. It's a little bit of the pieces of a puzzle. But there is also at the end, the amount of money that is involved, the timeframe that is involved, the neighbors that are involved, and the desire politically of this council to move forward in building a road at the taxpayers' cost or at the developer's cost, which was the policy that happened when the larger developer came to town and asked us no longer to get involved. Or is that also the possibility, that there is yet another possibility, thinking outside the box altogether, that would possibly allow us as a municipality to purchase a land and within a certain period of time, decide we are the one who will be the beneficiary of the taxes and now of the improvement, the levis, et cetera. But we also have to consider that there are many, many pieces of property in town that are available and a certain amount of development that large developer want to see done, probably before we could even think of a possibility. But that could be another outside of the box thought.
Okay, we're looking at anywhere from 187 to 327, right, Jeff?
237.
No, 327 is...
Yeah, the paving adds 140 grand.
Now, the question I ask, if we think outside of the box and we look at the future, will somebody look at this situation and say, hey, the road is there, it's paved. I want a small acreage dwelling I can build there. Is it, is it going to, is it going to give some...
Incentive.
Incentive because we have got that road there and it's paved? And is it going, is it going to add to enhance our community in that area? Or are we, are we shooting ourselves in the arm in the fact that we have these other areas just off of Seventh, Seventh Street, which may come to council and say, hey, you did it up there on 11th. Now will you do it for us behind the Agro Dome and in that area and in the, and the project right across from the golf course? That's my concern is, are we setting a precedence?
And that is also a very good point because you do a dust abatement on one area, there are other areas that are going to require exactly the same.
We've done a dust abatement on the, on the one road.
Right.
And in front of Hanson's.
Yes.
Jeff, if I'm correct, and I understand in the past when we sold the last lots up in the southwest corner there, that was a town project. in the southwest corner there, that was a town project. We own that land, right? We developed them.
I think Sixth Street was the last big project in the west.
Yeah, and we sold all of them. Now, did the council of the day pass a bylaw that the town would no longer get into the development? So it's still open, it's a possibility. Now, I like the idea of thinking outside the box because if the town did do that, they would be the beneficiary. They'd sell the lots. They could have some controls as to quality control of the infrastructure being, being put in there. And when you have a big piece of land like, like that, I, I see, rather than a hodgepodge, a lot here, a lot there, a lot there, I see a development that people like, they like those kinds of things.
Sort of incentive.
So it's an incentive to the town to do something like that. I, I like the idea personally. I think it's a, a good idea. I like that.
Just an idea, but that's something that needs to be discussed with the developer.
The big thing there is you're, you're gambling on the buildout.
Right.
So we go in there, we put $350,000 worth of infrastructure in there, we're competing against 143 other lots that are for sale in town. What if we don't sell one but for every 10 years? You know, that, that's the risk, right? You would have been better off actually to get one or two caveats out of the other scenario. Financially, you would have been better off. So you're assuming some risk and you have some political risk.
Yeah. The other thing, I know that there are some other communities around Southern Alberta who are, they're encouraging people to move into their communities and they have land, they have developed and they're selling their lots at a reduced rate to get people to come in. And I'm sure that they're looking at their tax base, saying that the benefit to the town is going to be X number of dollars because we're, yeah, we're selling it for less money, we're covering our costs, but we're going to benefit with the taxes down, down the road. And the other thing is, a builder can buy those lots and they can build those houses on spec and, and sell them too. So I don't know, I, I don't see that it's a bad idea.
But it has to be discussed and
Oh, yeah, definitely.
First of all, you need to figure out how much I would sell the land for so that makes you reselling it affordable.
Yeah.
And when you have a large property like the Sanson property, you also need to know what he wants for these properties. If he, if he knows he's going to be resold, does he want top maximum dollar or does he want to be reasonable enough in order for us to acquire those lots? And how many could we develop?
In that scenario, you just have this market risk.
Yeah.
So we have a lot of lots available, subdivided and there, there doesn't seem to be a lot of inf, like a lot of uptake.
Right now.
So, I mean, the town is certainly not in a position where we have to go develop 11th Street, whether we buy the land or whether the developer does it.
I, I'm not suggesting for a moment that we do it. I'm just saying it's a, it is a good idea.
It's just another idea.
It's another idea that would make sense under certain circumstances.
You put the idea forward, maybe soon either we find a solution.
Two cases in point is Nobelford, what they've done with their community.
That's the one I was thinking of.
And also Colhurst, who's now is expanding.
Nobelford, you want to dig into that one a little deeper?
But.
They, they're setting themselves up for a really big.
They, they are one way, but in another way, they're really enticing a lot of building going on in Nobelford right now.
Sure.
And Colhurst, there's a lot of building going on.
Very much.
You want to look at a background.
And, you know, if we, if we have lots, what's going to bring people to them? I, I was just thinking that maybe we need to look at our funds that we have available to attract something like business or industry that's going to bring people because you can't just bring people in here and, you know, unless there's something that's going, you know, that's going to bring, you know, attract people that, you know, that they have jobs to stay. And so my thoughts are, are that maybe we, we need to spend our money where it's going to be something that will provide jobs for people or attract people and then that's going to take care of itself.
Well, you know, that's another type of thought. But you can also look at or stop dreaming of a development that could really start to think a little bit more futuristic, making more friendly with solar or with, uh, over enough for super speed internet, something that would attract a different type of clientele that is more futuristic in our thinking.
See, what, on past council, we had two or three presentations, uh, considering the town going in and developing this area and setting it up the way the town visualizes it, especially in the Agro Dome area, you know, a community within a community sort of thing. And, uh, but then I, I have to, I have to, I'm, I'm quite concerned about two other development areas and they're both in the southwest area. And, and that's the one behind the Agro Dome. It's very progressive and those people who own that are very progressive. And also the one right by the golf course, and that is very progressive. And we have had word that that one by the golf course is going to start.
Increase.
Yeah.
It's just Phase One right now, yeah. And that is, that is, all that is good. We, it's just points of discussions, right?
So first I want to thank Jeff for appealing to my inner spreadsheet geek.
Yeah.
That was good.
The Barfus report. The Excel version.
I, I, that's the next question. This is the Excel version available.
Sure is.
They're playing with the numbers.
It sure is.
Um, to me, what this, this really boils down to is a philosophical discussion on where the town should be involved. And I think a good argument can be made on both sides. The position that was taken at the time Council Barnes is referencing is previously the town did develop lots, was the town didn't want to be in competition with private business. And, you know, the libertarian part of me likes that idea. Um, I look at communities like Lathbridge where the town, the city does all of the infrastructure.
About all of it.
Um, and that, it, it works from a control, but you also pay a lot for those lots, right?
A hundred thousand dollars upfront.
So there's, and, and they're in an area where there's been great demand for those lots. And so I really do think that, I lean towards the side of town not being involved in, in competing with private business because of the risk, the market risk that we talked about a little bit there of what happens when we spend $350,000 or $40,000 developing a piece of property and we already have 143 lots for sale in town and there's no great uptake right now. Hopefully that changes, but I like the idea better of trying to find that business that helps to generate the desire to have those lots and then private business will step in to fill that gap. But if jobs aren't here, people aren't going to be buying houses here. At the end of the day, I don't care how good of a deal you make, Nobelford's making a great deal for people to build there right now. But they're sacrificing what they're going to be doing in the future in order to do that. There's not a natural demand that they're creating for that, it's an artificial demand. And eventually that will collapse.
Have you ever thought then that you could possibly attract people who are with the new technologies available, able to work from home? And that could be accountant, that could be engineer, that could be what, consultant? And all what they need is a fast upload and download.
Correct.
And those, uh, when I visit Kimberley, this is what surprises me.
Exactly.
The people come in that town and I've spoken to quite a few of them. Now Kimberley is a town that was dying because it lost its main industry. But it's revitalizing itself through that new generation of people who like the outdoors, who like something a little bit more younger in the way of thinking, a little bit more progressive, and who work from home.
And if you look, Firdies and other communities are doing the same thing.
Fascinating and I'm thinking, okay, there are some of those people who would love to live in, in the backyard of an international park or of great mountain and skiing area, et cetera. So I'm just wondering, and Kalispell is not far, and I'm wondering if we are not restricting our view of who we could attract in our community.
And I think that's, that's a really big picture that we need to, to look at. It's one of the reasons why we, as a council, I think, got behind the Axia idea was because it was providing some of that infrastructure that
We need.
Quite what we need, but don't really have the funding to be able to put in ourselves. So I, I think there's, that thinking, I think, was driving some of that. Um, and I think from an economic development point that that's, in some ways it's an easy area to go after, in other ways it's very difficult because it's a, it's literally a person by person attraction to draw those people into our community.
It's very difficult to attract large industry in our town. We are not well located to have manufacture, manufacture in our town because we're too far from the transportation hub. And otherwise, you have an added cost to the manufacturing of whatever product. So we can be retail, bulk sales, stuff like that will work if it does not, if it's not a location driven.
Well, I hear what you're saying, you know, with, but, you know, whether, whether that we are attracting, you know, like, you know, may not, manufacturing may not be the, the industry that we're attracting, but if we're, if we're putting our money towards, uh, you know, let's say solar or something so, so that we can bring down our, our utility costs in the community so we can recoup that. If we're bringing, putting our money towards high-speed internet so that we can attract those types of people that can work, you know, anywhere in the world. Um, you know, that's the kind of thinking, you know, that, that I think that we, we need to think of as, as a something, like I say, just providing more building lots won't do the trick.
No, I agree with you. It has to come with an incentive that is worthwhile.
Right.
Yeah, I totally agree with you.
And if you think back to the very beginning of our alternative energy program.
Yeah.
The, the, we started with windmills. The idea behind it being was that we would be able to generate a amount of electricity that would be able to be used as an attractive to bring people to our community.
Yeah, to bring the prices down.
And so, you know, with our, our efforts and conversations that we've had as far as other electrical generation ideas, I really do think that's a great way that I'd like to see us continue to work in because that's one of those things that can provide an additional benefit for why people would want to move here.
Are you trying to tell me, Councilor, that a position on an ADF committee would be interesting?
I, I would be open to the opportunity.
Thank you. It's good. Keep his name somewhere, Jeff.
That's right. V A R.
Yeah, we're really straight off, we're really straight off on this subject. But as we met in, earlier in, in our term, we talked about tourism. And in real estate, there's, there's a term that you use, location, location, location. And we have an ideal location in this community. If you look at a great big wagon wheel, we're close to the Gila Eashe National Park, we're close to Waterton Lakes National Park, we're close to Head Smashed Inn, we're close to, uh, uh, whatever. And use this as a central location and do our tourism on that situation that you can come home and rest here, get all your talent and everything at night. Your, your nightlife is here with the theater, the light programming and stuff. And during the day, you can go out and it's a day drive to go onto these destinations. So this could be a tourist destination stop.
So one, one of my concerns when we talk, I mean, this is going way off of our topic here, but one of my concerns when we talk about tourism is that by and large tourism jobs are not high-paying jobs.
No.
And so it's difficult, and especially in our area, they tend to be summer jobs. Our tourism tends to be very seasonal basis. Those aren't the kind of jobs by and large that are going to generate people coming here to buy homes.
No.
I think they're, it's an important part of our community and I think we need to have it and support it. But I, I'm concerned about putting an emphasis on that area as being the answer to our economic problem here. Um, we need to find, you know, every community, we heard this at AMA, every community is looking for the magic bullet, they're going to bring in the big company manufacturing that's going to change our community, right? Those don't happen very often. So we've got to continue to search. I think we have some good ideas of going forward. But when it comes down to what we want to do with 11th Street, I think this is the cart before the horse. I think we need, have other issues that need to be focused on first, especially given that we have 143 lots right now.
Okay.
It's not like there's a shortage of lots.
Alright, so maybe it's time to try to go around the table and to try to really get a sense of your interest in participating in a cost of building that 11th Street or leave it as intended for the developer to deal with it. So, Councilor Benry, your name?
My question to Jeff, it's going to be a question, it's not right, right now. Jeff, what incentive have we put on these 143 lots to sell them?
They're not ours.
Those are not ours.
All of them are.
The private developers.
Other than the town.
Well, we have that Scal bill, we got a few in Scal bill.
Right, we have a nine.
Nine.
Is there anything that we can do to the owners of those 143 lots to see if they will start to move them?
They're probably trying.
You could raise your minimum tax, not a reduced amount, so they won't get rid of them. That, that's a, that's a method some municipalities employ. I'm not saying it's popular.
You know something?
Wouldn't be popular.
No, it's not popular.
It's not popular, but it exists and it's done in many, many, many towns.
Absolutely.
There would be an economic argument that the fact they have infrastructure invested, they are motivated to get rid of them. That, that would be, you know, some economy class somewhere. That there's a motivation there because they're invested, they want their money back out. Um, but we don't have control, and the ones we do have control in Scal Bill, and we've moved one a year, you know, it's been pretty quiet. We don't have a considerable margin on those lots. I mean, those start in the thirties for those lots.
They're low-priced lots.
Yeah. But we're not seeing a rush of demand for those either, you know? So you, we could drop the price on those.
Okay. So we staying with a question, Councilor Benry, or are we going to have a position?
My position is that we do not participate in 11th Street right now.
Okay, alright. So, Councilor Benry, thank you, Councilor.
So, yeah, my, my position then is, is simply yes, I agree. I think council does need to create a position and I think the timing of this discussion is unfortunate with the election coming, potential for a, a different feeling. Um, this, this almost seems like one of those discussion points that might be appropriate to push into the next council and say, and, and by saying that, what I mean is, and provide them with all the information. Because, you know, it, it's difficult to start with a new council because then you have to re-educate and start over. This council has a history. This council kind of has, we, we know the direction we've wanted to take with this, we know the frustrations we've had. So I, I think that no matter what we decide, there needs to be a significant education piece maybe put into the, into the new council, not orientation, but into their, you know, economic development, uh, so that they can create a position in this way. And we're not just talking 11th Street, we're talking in general, the direction the town wants to go. As Councilor Creed pointed out, you know, there's, there's other options, you know.
Councilor Poy, have you ever thought that it could become an election issue?
Well, that's great, I mean, anything should become an election issue, that's what, that's good.
No, I mean, I'm saying, you say next council, but I can see before that.
Right. So, um, my feelings on this is that, um, at this point in time into the foreseeable future, it's not an economic benefit
That's right.
To the town. It definitely isn't. There's only, there's only one, one person there that wants to have it happen in a big way. Mr. Sanders is certainly not going to develop. Mr. Williams is. Mr. Williams is not going to develop. And Mr. Holland has no desire, according to the government decision I had with him, to develop. So I, I, I don't think that there's any point in us moving forward at this point in time.
Okay, so let's carry on. Councillor Edmond?
I'm not in favor of putting town budget development. This is being, this discussion has been going on for the last three councils, or probably even the last five councils.
And you went the wrong way.
You're going with the max tech too, something.
Councillor Banfus, I think I understand your position.
Yeah, I think at this point it's just, it's not.
And Councillor Creed?
The, the timing isn't right. I mean, you look at the economy, I mean, we've got, we've got that EJ Wood thought that the developer wanted to build things on, he hasn't moved on it in how many years? There, there's no, I don't think there's an appetite right now.
Okay, so it seems to me from hearing around the table, the different comments, that we would direct administration to contact Mr. Schaefer and report of the position of council, which is not to participate as a town in the development.
Does administration need a motion to that attract?
I believe that do.
Well, I'm prepared to move that we direct administration to contact Mr. Schaefer and let him know the general position of council as it stands now.
Okay. Thank you. Are you in favor? Alright, so council, we, would you mind if we do the two next questions and then we'll take a break? So it's not going to take very long. The letter, under seven, seven G is...
Oh, okay, okay.
Is a letter of approval for sustainability award. So Jeff, do you want to give us a quick debrief on this one?
Alex just got notice about the Community Sustainability Award through FCM. He feels that given some of the retrofit, street lighting, ice rinks, civic center we've been doing, solar installations, for a community of our size, we'd actually have a fairly strong application for the award. The award requires a letter of support for the application from your council. And so he asked if I'd bring this forward to see if this council would put forward a letter of support.
Okay.
Give somebody else a chance, eh?
I, I would like to move that we give a letter of support for this application, any more sustainable.
Thank you. Questions? No?
Great idea.
Okay, are you in favor?
Thank you very much. I really believe that it is important to keep our town in a limelight a little bit. You know, we, we have a very special little town. Seven H changes our location for the barbecue. We received a letter from, from MP Marks and the barbecue will now be switched from location from Stand Out to the Tennis Center from six o'clock to nine o'clock on September the fourteenth.
Where's it going to be now?
Tennis Center.
Or the Tennis Center.
Okay. Travel elders and leaders have confirmed their attendance. So I would like to know how many of you intend to be there?
When is it on again?
Thursday, Thursday.
At six P M.
This Thursday?
Yeah.
So I will also be there and change my...
At nine o'clock instead of six?
Six o'clock.
Six tonight.
Six tonight, okay.
I thought I heard her say...
That's what I thought.
Six thirty. You're not going to help my figure any?
It's my French, guys, sorry.
I, I will be there.
Okay. So we have regrets from two councillors. That's all.
They don't need anymore.
Thank you.
I, I will be there.
Well, you will be there, sorry. So from one councillor.
It's a lot.
Thank you. So...
Lethbridge?
Your, your regrets?
At this point?
No, I have to go to Washington.
Oh. Yeah, he has to go his way.
Alright. We need to recess. So, Councillor Barnes? Are you in favor? Thank you. We should reconvene in about twenty minutes, fifty minutes.
Here you guys a little food there?